Good morning. This is a meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee. The hearing is now called to order. I'm Councilwoman Danielle McCray, representing the 2nd District. I'm also Chair of the committee. In attendance, we have, I'm just going to go in order that I see my committee members. We have Councilman Ryan Dorsey. We have Councilwoman Felicia Porter. We have Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer. Here, and we also have a few other council members joining us outside of the committee. So I'm going to recognize Councilman Robert Stokes, Councilman Christopher Burnett, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, sponsor of the bill, and Vice President Sharon Gray Middleton is also here today. Before we get started, I just want to speak about a couple of ground rules. Just requesting that you stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. That you mute yourself when you are not speaking. Before you speak, please identify yourself, the agency or organization you are with, and your position. Just requesting that you speak slowly and clearly. After you're finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you're recognized by the Chair. We are asking that committee members and city agency officials keep their video on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. This is for transparency, so members of the public know that we are listening and paying attention. Last, for members of the public, there will be an opportunity for public testimony. You will have two minutes each for testimony. Today, we are here for City Council Resolution 21-0002R, Investigative Hearing, Inland Flood Mitigation, for the purpose of inviting the Acting Director of the Office of Emergency Management, the Acting Director of the Department of Public Works, the Director of the Department of Planning, the Director of the Office of Sustainability, and other representatives of these agencies to provide an update on efforts to mitigate and prevent inland flooding, which is not covered by the recently passed nuisance flood plan. Plan, excuse me. The hearing format today is as follows. We're going to have brief remarks from the sponsor of the resolution. Then we will hear reports from the Department of Public Works, the Department of Planning, the Office of Sustainability, and the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management. Actually, I forgot one. We're also going to be hearing from the Department of Transportation today. That's going to be followed by questions from committee members, and then we will have public testimony. Inland flooding across Baltimore City has increased significantly over the past few years. It's an issue in many of our communities, and I would like to thank Councilwoman Ramos for introducing this resolution so we could have this conversation. We're now going to hear from the resolution sponsor, which is Councilwoman Ramos. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Ramos at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee and our agency attendees, as well as the public. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for giving us this time to talk about this important issue that often doesn't get talked about until it happens. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity. I had submitted written testimony to all of you previously. I just wanted to highlight how this came to me. Last summer, in July, there was a massive flood in my district. You can see, I think Mr. Green or Mr. Peters might be able to pull it up. A, thank you. Photos, the first photo that you see there with the bus, it was a massive flood on 35th and Hillen Road, just south of Murvo. And it was a massive flood. It happened very suddenly. There were lots of cars around where neighbors had to take other neighbors out of their cars because the cars were being submerged. An MTA bus got stuck in the waters, rapidly rising waters. We had other people that had to punch themselves out of their cars through the car window to get out before their cars were submerged. It happened so quickly. And so these are very, very dangerous floods that are happening. I'm learning a lot about the issue, so I appreciate everyone coming. But let me just also say that this isn't the first time this happened. The other photo that you see there is from 1957. And if you can see it, that it's coming from the back of Murvo to 35th Street, and the floodwaters are up to the porches of the neighbors in 1957. So this is an issue that's been happening for decades, and I'd like to just bring it up as a way of having this conversation about what can we do about it. The Nuisance Flood Plan, which I believe one of the agencies is going to talk about, talks about our coastal flooding in the areas near the water. But we really need to bring attention to the issue here. And I'm grateful for my colleague, Councilwoman Burnett, who's also dealing with this issue in his district. You will hear from constituents of mine about this particular flood and other flooding that they've been having in the area. And I submitted in my testimony also some various questions that I think the agencies will be answering. I'm so grateful for all of your time today to address this issue. And again, you know, hopefully we can come up with some ways, not just here, but in our subsequent conversations after this hearing, to address this issue, mitigate the flooding, but also prevent the flooding from happening again. Thanks for sharing the screen, and thank you, Madam Chair, for the time to address this issue.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Before we get to agency reports, I just want to acknowledge, from the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis is here. And I also want to acknowledge, from the Council President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson. Also, Councilman James Torrance has also joined the hearing. We're going to hear from agency representatives at this time. Committee members, I'm asking you to hold your questions until we have heard from all of the agencies. We are going to start with the Department of Public Works. So I believe that's going to be Ms. Kim Grove. Are you going to be presenting, or are you going to be making comments for the Department of Public Works?
Good morning. My name is Kim Grove with the Department of Public Works. Collectively, the Office of Sustainability, the Office of Emergency Management, and the Department of Public Works did develop a PowerPoint presentation for you all. And if possible, we'd like to be able to share that with you in that order.
Okay, I'll ask Matt Peters. He's going to share a screen with you. Did you guys send that presentation over already?
We had, we had sent over one. And we had been coordinating with Nina. We were under the understanding that we would have the opportunity to basically drive our own presentation.
Give us a second while we give you, while we share a screen with you.
So, good morning, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Lisa McNeely. I'm the Director of Sustainability for the City of Baltimore. As Kim mentioned, we have a PowerPoint that goes through First Mine, and then Emergency Management, and then DPW's prepared testimony. I also want to take a moment to introduce Bruna Atala, who's also on the call, who is our coastal planner and our current floodplain manager. She's on to help, help make sure we can answer as many questions today as possible. Kim, if you can advance it two slides. And so I just wanted to start very briefly with some background on the Office of Sustainability. We maintain the sustainability plan for the whole city and have a broad charge around helping make the city more equitable and resilient, and also staff our Commission on Sustainability. Next slide. Again, part of the reason I'm the first presenter is just to kind of start, even though I know that we have some very specific questions about some particular areas in the city in front of us today, wanted to take a minute to give a little bit of context. And one of the places that we wanted to highlight were areas where we have more and less control around flooding in the city, and a range of, you know, who has roles and what has an impact on the flooding. And so obviously, the weather and the changes that we're expecting due to climate change are a major factor. But the city does have design standards we look at. We monitor how we monitor land use and also have specific projects and programs. But that middle map, it's probably a little too small for some of you to see. But what that highlights is that there are five different watersheds in the city, and all of them are, reach outside our borders. And so we, the amount of water that comes in through the city, both in our streams or overland or other ways, you know, can come from far outside our boundaries where we don't always have, where there are some different factors in play. Next slide, Kim. So one of the, one other plan that the Office of Sustainability manages is our Disaster Preparedness and Planning Project. This is required by FEMA to plan for natural hazards. What our, we call it the DP3. What the DP3 does for Baltimore is we also have incorporated future climate change impacts into this planning, into this very large, very sort of plan that looks to sort of protect health and safety, prevent damage. And it's, it is a citywide plan that looking at, like I said, the human hazards. And as we updated, and as we looked updated in 2023, we're also planning to include human-made hazards, addressing equity, and some other issues. So next slide, Kim. I wanted to pull up a few examples of the kinds of strategies or recommendations that we have in the DP3. There, we focus in four different categories: infrastructure, buildings, natural systems, and public services. These are some that are very specific to flooding. We have some strategies that protect, that help the city be less vulnerable to all of the natural hazards that we face. And in many ways, if you, hopefully, this is something that many people can read, that these are examples where we're looking at ways to, you know, educate people, encourage people to purchase flood insurance, looking outside of our jurisdictions on these issues of flooding. But also, another theme that runs through a lot of the recommendations are protecting critical facilities. Next slide. Councilwoman Ramos mentioned our, the Nuisance Flood Plan, just to make sure. So there are lots of floods that can be a nuisance, but for this, the purposes of this plan, the state-defined nuisance planning, really more is sunny day flooding. So this is flooding connected to high tides that, you know, it's the flooding that we'll see down at Harbor and on the waterfront. It often occurs, sometimes with or even without, without or even sometimes with precipitation. I mean, it's something that was one of the types of flooding that we are expecting to be made worse by climate change. The, it was, the state, this was, the bill was mandated by the state, a bill that passed in 2019. At this moment, the plan has no real regulatory components. This is not something that, back, back up, please, that it doesn't have, it doesn't sort of change the city code in any way. The intention by the state was to gather information and to sort of better understand this kind of flooding across the state, sort of where it's happening, and to try to get a sense of where it's made worse. So this is a five-year plan. They're planning to take that data that they gather over five years and use that to start planning mitigation at a state level for this type of flooding. Wanted to also note that as we developed that and were able to highlight some of the different zones and the areas where we are seeing, you know, the flooding occur, we had, there was an existing model that MDOT had prepared that's really only there for tidal regions and is based on sea level rise. So we had data, we knew where that flooding was happening, and this doesn't always exist for some of the other types of flooding at this point. So at the same time that this is a sea level rise type of flooding, it is, it still has more complex causes, just like all of the flooding, whether it's the riverine that I'm going to talk a little bit more about in a moment, or even the inland flooding because it's connected to drainage capacity and everything. So next slide, Kim. Wanted to talk a little bit more about how it is that we are going to be tracking and cataloging the nuisance flood events, because I think it relates to this broader issue of flooding. There's a MyCoast app that the state is still developing, and that we'll be a pilot for it once it's finalized. We expect to use that application to document flooding anywhere in the city, not just on the coast. It's, the app is designed for that kind of use. We'll take data from that application, which we think will be fairly detailed. It's going to be geocoded. It's going to automatically be tied to whether or not what the weather conditions are. But we'll plan to merge that with 311 service data and hopefully have, be able to report data, again, hopefully throughout the city, kind of over the next few years. So my last slide, I wanted to talk about the riverine flooding. So this is another area that's, that's very regulated. FEMA, because we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, we are required to enforce a minimum level of floodplain regulations so that, so my office reviews permits, development projects, to ensure that we're in compliance with that program. That map at the bottom, it's really hard to see because our floodplanes are, these riverine floodplanes are just in areas adjacent to things like the Jones Falls and the Glenns Falls. But it's a, this is a substantial part of the work that my office does. Just as a side note, we introduced, there was a bill introduced at the request of the administration just on Monday to update the maps and do some simplifying and clarifying updates to the code, again, related to this type, this, this regulated floodplain. We are also participate in a community rating system. This is a voluntary program where we were recertified at a Class 5. And this is a, that's, we should note that we were one of only two jurisdictions who received that higher rating in the state of Maryland, and there are only a handful nationwide who received a higher rating. This is in recognition of not just the fact that our floodplain regulations exceed the FEMA ones in some areas, but also due to a range of other types of outreach that my office does that goes beyond what, again, the requirement that we do. So we reach out to try to maximize the number of people who have flood insurance to increase awareness of flooding and other steps to help people lower their risk. The last thing I wanted to just talk about was a little bit of explanation, excuse me, about flood insurance. And so right now, you know, anyone, most people, it should be anyone, can buy subsidized flood insurance. This is subsidized by the federal government. It's because we're part of this National Flood Insurance Program. It's a very important program for the city. Flooding is, is most of the time not part of regular homeowners' or renters' insurance. And it's often, if you have a federally backed mortgage and you're in this, the regulated floodplain, this is the area where there's a 1% annual chance of flooding. It used to be called the 100-year flood area. You're often required to buy this insurance. Because we're in the community rating system, those people in that 1% annual flood risk area get a 25% discount on their insurance. The, if you are in the 0.2% chance area, this is the, what used to be called the 500-year flood, it's a slightly wider area, flood insurance is often not required if you have those federally backed mortgages, but you also, you do get still a 10% discount if you choose to purchase it. We should, I should just want to really be clear, because we're in the NFIP, and because that means that the feds know, the federal FEMA knows that we have, are taking steps to reduce the risk of flood, anyone who buys insurance gets that, can get a discounted policy. And anybody who, just want to make sure everybody knows that if anyone has declined this federally backed coverage, they should certainly let our office know. And so on, on that note, I'm going to, I believe, hand it over to Chief Wallace.
Good morning, and thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to, to present to you. My name is James Wallace. I'm a Deputy Chief with the Fire Department. I'm currently the Acting Director for the Office of Emergency Management. With me today, I have Deputy Director Jennifer Malady from OEM. I also have the Planning Section Chief, Mr. Chris Hiles, who has also been the Project Manager for some of the flooding initiatives that we're working on other agencies with. I will, in one of the slides, ask Planning Section Chief Hiles to, to give you an update with regard to grant status. Next slide, please. So OEM, our responsibility, as it stands right now with this project, is to work alongside DPW and DOT, I'm sorry, DOP, as you've already heard, with regard to establishing some of these mitigation projects. We've also taken a very strong approach to community outreach, which occurred out on Frederick Avenue this past, end of this past summer, as well as providing support to city agencies and their critical needs. We do right now have focus on certain areas of the city with regard to flooding, those areas being the Frederick Avenue Corridor, Cherry Hill, as well as the Hillen Road and 35th Street Corridor. Next slide, please. So OEM, we, we have worked historically. You'll see in the, the written brief that I, that I applied, supplied to you, we've, we've worked historically back as far as 2018 with regard to coordination with state and local federal partners and some of the grant applications, especially for the Frederick Avenue flood zone. And at this point, I would ask, since she's been the lead on this, I would ask Planning Section Chief Hiles to please speak to the status of these projects.
Yes, sir. This is Christopher Hiles, Planning Section Chief for the Office of Emergency Management. Gating back to 2018, we began to engage with several federal grant and state grants for flood mitigation projects. Right now, we are in the study phase of the Frederick Avenue program. And the way that the Fed likes us, and MEMA, Maryland Emergency Management Agency, likes us to do these things is apply for grant money for a study, and that study should bring out not only what the situation is, but a report on what are some of the mitigating actions that we can take. With regards to Frederick Avenue, we are in the study phase, waiting for the contractor to clear BOE for their part of it. Once they're done doing a evaluation of the hydrology of Frederick Avenue, that information is going to be passed on to the Army Corps of Engineers, their Silver Jackets Program. They're going to review the findings and provide us a list of potential mitigating actions that we can take. Their services are, they cost around $384,000, but are being shouldered by the Army Corps of Engineers, so we're not on the hook for that. But their results will help drive how we spend the $600,000 matching grant, as well as the $54,000 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. In the latter's case, we're looking at putting up some signage that's automated, so that if there is a flood within, in a particular area off Frederick Avenue, signs outside of that flood area will activate and let drivers know that they should use caution or turn around. The $600,000 may be used for anything ranging from more signage to changing some of the infrastructure in the area to enhance drainage. On the larger end of projects, there is a separate FEMA program called the Buyout Program, where we can work with residents or owners of housing and purchasing their, their property, demolishing it and rehabilitating it into green space. Right now, we're, again, waiting for confirmation from the studies, but one of the major areas is a place called Frederick Manor. And they are willing to, the owners of that facility are willing to engage in, in the FEMA buyback program. The problem is that the price tag is something around $3 million just to purchase the property. And under the buyback program, the city would have to put that money up front. So it's a little bit more than the $600,000 that we have available to us. The BRIC program, the FEMA BRIC program is new to this cycle. We didn't put applications in for it, because at the time that we were told, we needed to have an application package turned in. It was beyond the point where we were, we'd be able to put one together. The cycles begin, both the BRIC and all the other programs, with the exception of the Buyout Program, which can happen at any point. The other programs, you're supposed to put a notice of interest in by August, and then a full application package by late November, early December. Those go to MEMA. We're currently looking at doing that process for the other two areas that the Chief had mentioned are on our, on our list. Chief, did you want me to get into the outreach part, or pass it back to you, sir?
I'll take the outreach, Chris. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this, this past summer, we conducted a, an extensive outreach initiative in the, the Frederick Avenue Corridor, specifically the Still Meadow area. That was coordinated by our Preparedness Section Chief and other members of the Office of Emergency Management. They work closely with the community, with Council Burnett's office, as well as the resiliency hub out there. And what we did after we planned this out is, is we carried out a neighborhood door-to-door campaign along with the Fire Department, with the Health Department, and with representatives from the other agencies that are, that are online speaking to you today. I consider that to have been a success. We engaged a lot of residents out there. We provided a lot of educational material. We engaged with regard to be more alert. We did get residents that were, that did sign on to the program to, to receive alert texting. And we also left over 300 outreach bags out, which, which left material for, for those who weren't home, so that we did, we didn't want to miss anybody out there. We had good engagement there. There's also been an online outreach campaign with regard to the Hillen Road Corridor. There've been meetings, as you see on your screen, in June, September, and October. I was also part of a video series that was filmed that's going to be put out in regards to flooding safety. That was done towards the end of September as well. Our intent now, and the projects that we're working on right now, in addition to Hillen Road, or the Cherry Hill community, we're modeling those, those outreach products in the same fashion as what we did on Frederick Avenue. The challenge that we've had recently with, with COVID restrictions is our ability to actually go out and engage in a manner that we did this past summer. So we believe as the positivity rate comes down, and we're able to actually get out with the Fire Department and other agencies and do a door-to-door, boots-on-the-ground campaign in the spring, we believe that we're going to be successful in deploying that same model into those soon, those other communities. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So our, again, some of our main focus and some of our main activities at this point, we, we do provide assistance with obtaining resources for city agencies during times of flooding, including staffing support, any supplies that may be needed, either pre, during, or recovery phases of flooding. We also assist with the acquisition of equipment. We would assist during a time of mutual aid with, with coordinating mutual aid resources coming in. We, we would also be lead in, in, the acronyms there are MEMAC and EMAC processes. The MEMAC process is the Maryland Emergency Management Assistant Compact. That would be applicable to the state of Maryland, where if we had specialized resources that we would need that are located within the state of Maryland, we would identify same with, within city government and within the emergency. We make the request at that point up to MEMA. They assist with coordinating acquisition of those resources, and they would be deployed into the city as we needed. And the EMAC request is, is the same format, however, that, and a good example of EMAC requests are during times of predicted hurricane strikes. When, when a state of emergency is declared, we are able to work with MEMA to request out-of-state resources. In, in case of a hurricane, it could be DPW resources, swiftwater teams, collapse rescue teams, and the like. We would bring those into an area proximal to the city that was safe and deploy those out as the incident commander would need. Additional activities, we have participated in DP3. I was part of the process in 2018 as a, as a battalion chief with the Fire Department. Again, significant outreach planning, mitigation planning. And a lot of that centers around our ability to participate with MEMA and FEMA in their funding meetings. And as a result of that, we are able to identify and assist other agencies in, in the application for funding at both the state and federal level. Next slide. So the Flood Annex, at this point, it establishes responsibilities for OEM, as well as other city agencies and organizations within the city to prepare for, respond to, and recover from flooding incidents, as well as mitigate the effects of the incidents within the city of Baltimore. We are actively involved with flood monitoring through Flood Alert System, as well as when we know we're going to have mainstem flooding on the Jones Falls, we do conduct extensive outreach and notification processes up through the, through the mills, up through the area on the Jones Falls. Another thing that we do do is a lot of social media outreach, be, be it through Twitter, Facebook, when we're made aware by the National Weather Service, either be, either by their broadcasts or through phone calls to us, or calls to them of potential situations that may involve flooding, that may affect the, the safety of our residents. We immediately start a, a social media push out to push that information out as quick as possible. I would also add that, that, that recently we've, the National Weather Service has increased their briefings to the state of Maryland through MEMA, through statewide emergency management calls. And we are always part of those briefings. I have a number of my staff that, that jump on. And, and we, we bring in that information, monitor it, and push it out through the city as needed. Next slide, please. So that's, that is the end of my presentation. Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of council, and other members of the community.
So, good morning. My name is Kim Grove, and I'm the Chief of the Office of Compliance and Research for the Department of Public Works. I also serve as the city's MS4 manager. So before I get into what DPW provides as a service, I wanted to cover what we have as our assets in the storm drain collection system. And we break it down into three different types. There's the collection, that means we, those are the inlets that you see at the street level. We have over 53,000 of those in the city. And then there's the conveyance system, basically all of the pipe network, which is about 1,200 miles of pipe. And these pipes are right alongside the sanitary sewer pipes, the water mains, and the conduits in addition to other utilities underneath the roadway. In addition to those pipe networks, we also have four pump stations. And then finally, all of that water discharges out to over 1,700 outfalls. So that's a large network of a storm drain system. Most, I'm sorry, all of this is funded by the revenue from the stormwater fee, which gets about $30 million per year. But that fee is meant to fund both the capital improvement program for both the storm drain system and the MS4 program, in addition to the operations, which includes 146 positions. Those operations include street sweeping, and the capital program includes best management practices and restored streams. Now, I have been working with DPW for 10 years, primarily within stormwater management. And I will be the first one to tell you and to recognize, we love our acronyms. We also use a lot of language that you may not be used to. So in addition to this PowerPoint presentation, we have included a two-page glossary of terms to just use as a reference. It includes both a glossary of acronyms as well as further definitions, especially into the types of flooding that occurs within the city. So within DPW, we have five major divisions that have some type of role or responsibility during flooding. And those are lifted, listed on the left-hand side, and they vary from reaction to planning, to prevention. What I want to focus on, though, is on the right-hand side, and this is the methodology we use when trying to address reports of flooding, whether it be related to choked inlets, water in cellars or water in basements, or the flooded streets. So the methodology is, we first see, is there any kind, is there anything blocking our system? If not, is there anything within the system that needs to be repaired? Those 1,100 miles of pipes, the majority of them were installed prior to 1950. They are at the end or past the end of their useful life. And even though we have a stormwater utility, that utility has only been in place since fiscal year 2014. Prior to that, it was woefully underfunded. So right now, we're just kind of playing catch-up with trying to restore and manage this system. We have looked at what the cost would be to upgrade or to replace all of the storm drain network, and that would be a price tag of almost $5 billion. Now, just like our water main system, we wouldn't want to do that overnight, but we do need to start at some point in time of methodically trying to get there. Now, in addition to the system repairs, we look at land conditions and drainage patterns. Sometimes roadway paving can play a really big part, whether that means that the pitch of the road has changed where the water goes, or that the pavement may have covered over an inlet. We also look at the land conditions. Has something happened? And we see this a lot in private properties where the initial layout of the backyards were such that all the water could go to the very back of the property, at your property line, and then just run down that property line. But individual property owners start making improvements to their land, and the next thing you know, the middle property is the low spot where a lot of drainage, a lot of ponding starts to happen. So in addition to that, we also look if there's a possibility of a violation. Is, is some type of construction happening where the sediment is not being controlled on that property? How, there's a lot of optimes that we have seen where concrete trucks start washing out their concrete and leaving all of that material going down into the storm drains, which basically starts to then cement up within the system, and it blocks it. It minimizes what the capacity within that system. We also evaluate, where is the flooding happening? Is it happening on the public side or in a private location where DPW may not have the authority or jurisdiction to do the improvements? Now, after the field evaluation, we will also do a comparison to the design storms. Design storms, so when we design the storm drain system, it is not meant to prevent any water from ever accumulating within the roadway. And in fact, the inlets are designed so that so much water would be able, it's called gutter spread. It's where the water will accumulate along the curb and extend out to a certain amount for certain design, uh, storms. For the city of Baltimore, that includes the 10-year storm or a type of storm that has a 10% chance of happening any year. One other thing about the language related to flooding, we will recognize that the language can somewhat be confusing. I myself have endured four 100-year storm events, one 500-year storm event, and about 10 50-year storm events. I know I look good for my age, but it doesn't mean that a storm is only going to happen once every 100 years. It really comes into what is the probability that it will help, that it will happen, sorry. So we do the comparison of the design storms. And this lets us know whether or not we maybe need to increase a pipe size or add more inlets. The actions that come in can be twofold. One can be an immediate action, a simple point repair that may be either able to be done by our utility maintenance division, or if the repair is much larger, by using one of our urgent needs contracts that we, that we keep for storm drainage. We may just make some recommendations for a larger capital improvement project, which is what we have done for the Cherry Hill neighborhood. Enforcement is an option, not only enforcement on what DPW has an authority, but also working with DHCD on certain enforcement related to the building code. And most importantly is, we record. We record both the investigation and what the recommendations are. The long-term solution is what we might look at if we're seeing things repeating, or if we are seeing something that we know if another storm happens this way, it will be catastrophic. The Frederick Avenue is a great example of that. And those types of solution can include debris control, system repairs, meaning either adding more inlets or increasing the pipe sizes, or looking at upland BMPs, BMPs being best management practices or stormwater facilities. Now, I do want to caution, storm drain networks are not just about looking at the parts. It is a part of a system. So an example might be that it's not just a matter of in, so if you had to increase a pipe going from a 15-inch diameter to an 18-inch diameter, but it's not just doing one pipe segment. You would have to look all the way down that pipe segment to make sure that you weren't passing along a constriction later on. So if you have five other pipe segments that are only 15 inches, you have to replace all of those pipe segments. So currently, we have several efforts underway. Number one is the Flood Alert System, and we are upgrading that to Flood Alert 2. And that is roughly about the cost of $150,000 that we're working towards. The Flood Alert System, as Chief Wallace noted, is a real-time system that allows DPW, as well as the Office of Emergency Management, to see not only rain gauge information, but also to see stream levels. So we're not deploying personnel, especially during heavy rainstorms, to verify where the stream level is at. We're able to get the real-time information there. That system is connected with the National Weather Service. And we had an event in August of 2019 that had our system of 17 rain gauges. Had that system not been a part of the National Weather Service, had they only relied on their one station at the BWI Airport, they would have completely missed the rainstorm, which was about four inches of rain falling in two hours in the downtown area. It was a very localized microburst event. And had that information, you know, had that gauge not been there for them to see it, we would have also lost out on vital information that helped a lot of the property owners with their claims of, of damage from that storm. We have several capital improvement projects underway, including a project in Cherry Hill, which is on the order of $10 million. We do have plans for increasing the amount of crews for proactive inlet cleaning. Just as an example of what that cost looks like, right now, our crews are, remove almost 556 tons of debris from specific inlets each year. And we would be adding three new crews at a cost of about $80,000 per year, hoping to add another 4,300 cleanings each year. So if, if the idea were to be, well, why don't we clean every inlet all the time? That may not be the best use of our workforce, but what we are trying to do, in addition to increasing the number of staff, is to look at data, 3-1-1 data, to see where we need to target it. We do have a plan for actually developing a hydraulic and hydrologic model, or known as an H&amp;H model, for the entire storm drain system. In the past, this type of modeling would be just done on a small project level. That does not bode well for looking at the system, system-wide, and being able to inform decisions on what we can do for our capital program. But I do want to reiterate that DPW cannot do all of this alone. First and foremost, we work as part of this city flood team, and I did mean to capitalize team, because we are using teams for that. It started off in 2018 when the Office of Emergency Management gathered a few of the agencies together to see how we could collaborate and look for grant assistance. And since then, we have just continued that collaboration. What we do plan to do is by the summer, start to have debriefing for any major storm, so we are data sharing. And Microsoft Teams is going to be able to help us with that. While the three agencies presenting today form the core of that team, it's not exclusive. There are many times where DOT, DHCD, and the Health Department do play a role in it. I am sitting on the Baltimore Metropolitan Council that is developing a resiliency guidance document for the region. So that is going to be for transportation and water infrastructure. We've already noted that we're a part of, we're one of the partners for the National Weather Service, and that includes an annual meeting where we not only review the rainfall data that happened across the Baltimore-Washington metropolitan area, but we, it also gives a chance for emergency managers to talk through of ways to improve. But it also, I, I do want to note, one of the things that I've learned from these partners' meetings is that a lot of times, for those flash floods, for those really quick thunderstorms that happen during the summertime, the most advanced notice we may get is 90 minutes. City of Baltimore since 2011 has been a part of the Urban Waters Federal Partnership. That means routine engagement with agencies such as NOAA, USGS, EPA, and the US Army Corps of Engineers. And last year, we created a subgroup, a flood group, to start looking at addressing regional flooding. This is really helpful, because even if Baltimore City stood up and had a full hydrologic model, we had a full plan. If the surrounding counties aren't also able to do that, it, it's an uphill battle that we would not be able to win. So collaboration is key. And of course, we take full advantage of the local academic researchers that are in the region to help us evaluating the data. In fact, UMBC and Princeton is looking at all of our rainfall data for the last 10 years and helping us to break it down and better understand the microburst events that happen in the city. So the Flood Alert System, as I noted, has 17 rain gauges. This is just an example of the way that the map looks, and then some of the real-time data that it can provide to us. And once we do the Flood Alert 2, we will, we do have plans on ways that we can make this a little bit forward and public-facing. But right now, we'd like to make sure that we've got the software and hardware upgrades completed. In addition to showing the data in this way, there are automatic notifications for the stream gauges so that if the Jones Falls up at Mount Washington starts to show that water levels are at a certain level, it automatically sends emails to the, to the Office of Emergency Management, as well as other to the Office of Emergency Management as well as other departments that are noted in that flood annex of the Emergency Response Plan. There are other ways that we look at the data. Um, so this is just the information off of four of the gauges that we have in our system plus the National Weather Services gauge at BWI. What you're going to see in both fiscal years 19 and 20 is that there's a wide variety of, um, how the storms act, especially in the summer we see this. Um, but for the total rainfall, what we've noted is that there sometimes can be almost 11 inches difference for the total rainfall. Uh, there's oftentimes you'll probably say, hey, I had this huge rainstorm and I was over there, uh, in downtown and, uh, folks over on East Baltimore didn't even have an inch, didn't even know that it rained. And we're seeing more of that happen. So by having more gauges, it allows us to better understand how the rainfall is occurring through the city. One other thing that I want to note in these top 10 events in fiscal year 20, in the ones that occurred in July and August, those were ones where we only saw, uh, really high numbers of precipitation or rainfall in only one of those locations. The, uh, August 6th, 2019 event was the one that happened in the downtown area. If you looked at our gauge over at, um, just, uh, sorry, at the, um, uh, Mount Washington, it didn't even have a tenth of an inch. As you go further into say October and into, uh, the winter time, it does seem that there are rainstorms do happen across the entire city. But one thing to note, and we have start, we have, um, we weren't the only ones noting it, USGS has also noticed this, is that our rainstorms start key, seem to be occurring more and more in the fall and winter and early springtime, which is also the dormant time for a lot of, um, plants and vegetation. So when we look at options of BMPs, when you're expecting the vegetation to play a role, um, you have to take a consideration in when the rainfall is happening. So this is, uh, what we talk about in comparing, in comparing, uh, design storms. So on the left-hand side is the way that the, uh, storm happens throughout a 24-hour period. What we seem to notice is that a lot of our storms don't, we're, we're not Portland, right? We're, they happen over 20, they don't happen over 24 hours. They really seem to happen only about, uh, three to four hours. And if you were to look at what it would look like in a 24-hour frame, some of our most intense storms, they, they, they're not even a one-year storm, they're not even a two-year storm. Uh, the green one, which is that one that I talked about, um, the, the one that happened in downtown, um, it, so it, at the end of 24 hours, it was not even a five-year storm. But if you take a closer look, which is the right-hand graph, at only the first two hours of that, that storm behaved with such intensity that it was even higher than a 100-year storm. It was basically a bucket drop, a drop. And so that's what we are seeing more and more seeing these, um, microbursts. I also want to point out that I have mapped out the storm that occurred in July that had that bus stop being, um, sorry, that had that bus being trapped. And at the end of two hours, the accumulated rainfall was actually less, it was between a two and a five-year storm, but in those first 30 minutes, it was much more intense than that. And that's, you know, that's just the type, that's the nature of the storms that we are starting to see. This is another way that we've used our rainfall, I'm sorry, our one rain data, our flood alert data to look at information. This was an event that happened in July 11th of 2019. Um, on the left-hand side, this is just the accumulated rainfall and pretty much what it's showing to you is that the storm itself didn't last but 30 minutes. Now we got a inch and a half of rain in 30 minutes and that is, that's, that's pretty intense, but it was done within 30 minutes. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the stream level variation. Now what I'm showing you is that we have three gauges. We have one at Mount Washington, one at Union Avenue and one further down at Streetcar Museum. And what you'll see is as expected, the stream levels rose up right when the rainfall happened and then they started to descend. And most times people would think, okay, we're all done. But then it came back up without any rainfall immediately within the city. What was probably happening was a combination of the effect of Lake Roland as well as whatever precipitation may have been happening in the county, making its way down to the Jones Falls. So that's why it's real important that we have these flood alert systems, both capturing what the rainfall is, but also how the, um, how the streams are responding. Now the other thing that I want to point out is that all of this happened within a few short hours and there have been certain speculations, couldn't you just model it out? Couldn't you just see it? When these types of flooding, this riverine flooding that happens, it happens so quickly that you're not, at this point in time, we don't have the capabilities to quickly model it. But we are in discussions with private entities that are speculating, you know, could this be possible? How can we use artificial intelligence to do that? So it's not off the table, it's just not available to us right now. I also want to point out that on this quickness, uh, the Frederick Avenue event that happened in 2018, in July of 2018, took less than 40 minutes from the start of that storm for the waters to overflow from the stream and to then collect into the street and start flooding. So I mentioned before that I am the city's MS4 manager and a lot of the funding that we have from the Stormwater Utility Fund, um, was developed because of and directed to complying with the city's MS4 permit. The MS4 permit is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit and it's really focused on improving water quality. Now within the realm of stormwater management, there are three main categories. There's water quality, there's water quantity or flooding, and then there's the asset management. And so we've had a lot of focus on the quality, but it doesn't mean that it's mutually exclusive and flooding hasn't been addressed. As you can see, all of the practices that we have either engaged with or planning to engage, in addition to having water quality improvements, there is some type of impact in ability to reduce flooding. But I don't want to give you the idea that it's going to be a full solution. So an example would be the buyer retention. Those are the little small stormwater facilities that you may see in, uh, on public spaces or in the right-of-way. And they can divert the water into it, they can reduce the peak flow, but it's only for a few of the storms. And what we're noticing is that when you have these really intense storms, a lot of these systems are offline. That means the water would have to change direction to go into the facility. So instead the water just keeps on going and bypasses it. Um, another one to be showing is, um, tree planting. So tree planting, a forest definitely does a fantastic job of reducing runoff. However, an individual street tree may have a lessened way of impacting it. Uh, the three that I have on the bottom, street sweeping, inlet cleaning and IDDE, all of those are not necessarily going to prevent the flooding. What they're really meant to do is in the existing storm drain system that we have, that they maximize that capacity as much as possible. You know, I mentioned before that on the inlet cleaning, we removed 556 tons of material. Um, on the street sweeping, if you look at any of our annual report for the MS4 permits, there are just thousands of tons of materials being pulled up out of the street and not clogging into our storm drains. And then IDDE, which is illicit discharge detection and elimination, um, what that does is make sure that nothing is getting into our storm, storm drains but rain. So we are looking at eliminating any cross-connections or illicit, uh, sorry, direct connections of say, a, um, homeowner, a, a home coming into the storm drain system when really they should be connecting their service to the sanitary lot. Or we have found, um, a lot of water main breaks that haven't erupted at the surface, but instead find their way to just, uh, pushing that water into the storm drain system. So by eliminating those illicit discharges, it not only improves the water quality, but it also is reducing the amount of water trying to use that storm drain system. So those are the things that we can do. I do want to note that in an urban area, our solutions, many of the solutions for stormwater management, especially when you're looking at upland BMPs are very land-intensive. And the reality is that the mayor and city council do not own a lot of land outside the right-of-way. In fact, when we just look at the impervious area, we only, we only manage about 6% of it. The rest of it is either, uh, single-family residential, commercial and business, there's other breakdowns that are there. Furthermore, once we have those that, um, we do have access to, when we start to do the analysis, what we have found is, um, basically we have to evaluate 10 locations just to have one that we might be able to construct. And even in that construction, sometimes the cost benefit is just not there. Uh, one other thing to note is, uh, flooding. I think Lisa had noted this before, what we can control and what we can't control. Flooding is not solely about the rainfall and the collection system. There's a human element in it. And especially when you're in a city like Baltimore, we have a lot of humans. And as what you can see here, when you look at complaints for dirty streets, you'll notice that it has a very similar pattern to the clogged storm drains. And this is information that has been provided by Vital Signs, which, uh, is, uh, valuation, I'm sorry, data that is provided by the Baltimore Neighborhood Indicators Alliance. So what we recognize is that, um, the debris that's in the mater-, um, that's in our storm drain systems that can, uh, compromise the capacity of our systems, that means we've got to do a lot more outreach and consideration with, uh, on the social side. So we have a lot of focus areas and, um, both Chief Wallace and Lisa have talked about quite a few of them, but I'm going to just take a moment, um, to point out that not all of our flooding considerations are riverine, a lot of them are pluvial. And pluvial means that the flooding is happening, uh, away from a river, um, but it is associated with rainfall. And some of, some of these projects we already have in design or we've got, uh, construction plans, uh, set for it. Um, on the Jones Falls, well, let me just talk to you about a couple of the projects. So the first one is the Lower Jones Falls. Yes?
This is, um, Nina with the mayor's office. I just wanted to, uh, take a pause here and allow the committee to potentially ask, um, some questions. I know that, um, you've worked really hard on this presentation, but I just want to be mindful of everybody's time, if that's okay with the chair.
Thank you, uh, Nina. I want to thank Ms. Grove for all the valuable information that you've provided as well as the other presenters. Um, actually before we move to questions, I wanted to make sure that we gave, um, Liam Davis from the Department of Transportation, um, just some time to make some brief remarks. And Liam, um, you can go at this time, thank you.
Sure, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Matt, do you have the presentation that I sent over or should I share, um, my screen?
Liam, I don't think I have a presentation from you.
Okay, so there's, I have my PC signed on here, I'm talking through my phone, so I just need my PC to be given the share screen function. All right, thank you so much. I have it. And we are going to share this and I am going to power through this. All right. Does everybody see, uh, what I have on the screen? So we're going to be really quick here, uh, for those who, for those of you who do not know me, this is Liam Davis, uh, Legislative Affairs Manager from Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Um, we're going to talk a little bit about inland flooding and how it relates to Department of Transportation from a mitigation and response, uh, standpoint, um, and some recent examples. And I'll be available to take questions. There, there's been great presentations thus far, I've been really learning a lot. My hat goes off to everybody from Planning and MoEM and DPW, you guys did a great job. So as far as, uh, DOT in, in terms of inland flooding and mitigation, we do work with our sister agencies, many of which presented today. Um, we look at, you know, potential inland flooding events and how it could impact city and, uh, city residents and, and city infrastructure. We're, uh, actively communicating when there are, uh, major events. Um, and DOT engineers are actively inspecting DOT infrastructure, um, analyzing to see if there is any impact from, um, weather events and flooding events that could compromise the infrastructure. Um, in cases where DOT infrastructure risks being undermined as a result of flooding, uh, we go, uh, and implement preventative measures or in some cases repairs. Uh, in terms of response, um, DOT, uh, Maintenance Division in preparation for coastal and inland flooding, we are the agency that organizes, uh, sandbag, public sandbag events. So a lot of times you'll see news crews down in Fells Point, but in recent years you've also seen, seen us at Frederick Avenue, which has been alluded to in Cherry Hill, where we literally take a truck, dump sand, have bags provided for residents that they can use and, uh, utilize to protect their property if need be. In cases where flooding is either anticipated or has happened, DOT Traffic Division will, uh, move forward with roadway closures and coordinate detours. Um, when infrastructure is damaged, which we will see, um, the next couple of slides, DOT works to repair and restore that infrastructure. Um, and when eligible, we seek reimbursement for incurred expenses from the Federal Highway Administration and the State Highway Administration. So here are some pictures of the 2018 flood on Frederick Avenue. Uh, obviously this is some pretty serious damage. Um, Eloquent City got a lot of the attention that year, but as you can see Baltimore City was also pretty severely impacted. Um, here's an after picture of the restored roadway, uh, new little retaining wall, um, new, uh, high-visibility crosswalks and ADA ramps were installed as well. This is looking more at, um, kind of the sandbag distribution, uh, that we had on Frederick Avenue this year in preparation for some storms. So you can see where we're really stepping up our efforts to address inland flooding, uh, from a mitigation perspective in terms of sandbag, uh, handouts to the public. Uh, also in Councilman Burnett's district, because Frederick Avenue is in the 8th District, uh, but also Franklin Town Road. Uh, this past year we had to close Franklin Town Road due to, um, soil erosion that was damaging, uh, and started, if you can see here, it started to erode away the road. So we had to close the road down, install some new riprap and, uh, a new, uh, a, a new wa- wall there to prevent cars from going into the stream. And that's, that's pretty much it. Uh, if there's any questions, I am available. Just to put it in perspective, the Frederick Avenue, uh, the road, the damage to infrastructure, we saw, uh, sought over $2 million in reimbursement from Federal Highway Administration. And that's roughly the amount of money that we allocate for urgent needs every year. So these single events can be very costly. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Liam. Um, I want to thank all of the presenters, um, who provided again some valuable information, um, at this time. Also want to acknowledge that Councilman John Bullock, um, has joined us, um, at this time. I'm also going to be moving directly into opening up the floor to committee members for questions. Committee members, you can signal or you can use the raise hand function if you have a question. Um, we're going to limit ourselves to two questions and then we're going to circle back, um, around. Um, for my first question, I'm going to ask, how are we proactively, proactively identifying areas that are experiencing inland flooding similar to Hill and Road and Frederick Avenue? And what I'm saying proactively identifying these areas, we have known for a long time, especially around Hill and Road, um, just like Councilmember Ramos put those pitches up, that this has been going on for a long time. There are other areas across the city where we know, um, are experiencing flooded and that it isn't impacting our infrastructure. We have residents who are put in in 311s who are contacting our office. How are our agencies proactively identifying these areas, um, that are experiencing inland flooding? And that question is for any of the agencies on the call.
So, uh, this is Lisa McNeely with the Office of Sustainability. Um, I think that, um, we appreciate the question. This is, uh, a very complicated issue. Um, you know, one thing, um, just to reiterate that, uh, or to, to circle back to one of the comments I made.
made, our office is, even though the MyCoast app is, was directly related to the nuisance flooding, we fully plan to use that to help pull in data as, you know, in the, moving forward on that, on additional flooding areas. One other tool that I neglected to mention from the DP3 that we have and our, that we use is a repetitive loss area analysis. Again, this is FEMA language. These are areas that have, where there have been multiple claims through the flood insurance program. We know where those areas are, and we send out annual mailings to everybody in this group. But we have that map. And some of the conversations that Ken Grove was talking about, you know, we are looking to combine this data with existing 3-1-1 data and other sources to try to move towards having something that's more robust. We know that's not going to capture all flooding, and Ken may have more to say on that. But that's, we're, that's how we're starting to move forward in the absence of the kind of data set provided by the state that we did have for the nuisance flood plan. And so I, Councilwoman McCray, you did note the 3-1-1 calls, and we are evaluating. Right now, we're looking at a data set of the last five years, because that's where we have the more specific rainfall data. What I was actually surprised at is that the peak number of calls for the service requests related to flooding, the peak number in any given day was only 113 for the entire city. So I'm not certain if that's going to, well, no, I can guarantee you, that's not going to be the only data set that we can use, but it's the most objective data set that we have right now. Couple that with information that Chief Wallace may have related to vehicle rescues, what we do recognize is that there is still a need for further data gathering. And so one of the things in the presentation specifically related to Hillen is an effort that is being done by emergency management and coupled with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation of getting interviews from folks. Because people maybe experience, may have experienced flooding, they've experienced flooding for years, and they may have just given up on the 3-1-1 system. So the, the system that we're using to evaluate the data, if they're not calling in, we can't see it, and we can't, we can't address it very well. So we do recognize that in addition to the evaluation of the data that we do have, we need to make a larger push on outreach for getting people to use both 3-1-1 system and eventually MyCoast, but also to find ways to get some of the qualitative parts. If we just counted just the number of service requests, number of service requests aren't going to get to the, the issues that we're seeing at Hillen. The service request is just going to say it's a flooded roadway, but it's not going to say, and it trapped a bus, and it caused people trauma. So we want to get some of that further qualitative data. And that's what we are collectively, through the agencies, talking about, the best ways to get that.
And Madam Chair, this is Chief Wallace. I'll weigh in a little bit further to, to just expand upon what, what Kim just said. That is part of the, the outreach initiative, is to closely engage residents and let them know. We need to know when these situations occur so that we can begin to compile this data and, and move towards a more favorable direction. With regards to emergency response, emergency management obviously monitors 911 call volume as well as, as dispatch information to, to a lot of the areas of the city. There are multiple areas in the city where if, if we have significant rainfall, we can anticipate that, that will likely have calls for assistance. Even outside of the Frederick Avenue corridor and some of the others that we've talked about, we, we have areas where we know a stationary thunderstorm, even a long-duration rainfall event is going to cause 911 calls to come in, and there will be rescues made.
Thank you, Chief Wallace. How many households do we have signed up for the BMO Alert System? Do we have that number?
Madam Chair, I don't have that number in front of me. I don't know if Planning Section Chief Hiles has that. If we don't, I will get that information to you today.
Thank you. Can we just make sure that we get that furnished to the committee? I would appreciate it. I see one of my committee members, we're going to go through committee members first, and then we're going to go to our other council people on the line who have questions. Councilmember James Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question, and also a thank you for the work that you guys have done around the Jones Falls, because that is a big issue in the Woodbury and Hampden community. And we've seen several car rescues, several cars float down the Jones Falls Run. My other question is to my further West Baltimore communities such as Hanlon Park, Walbrook Junction, as well as Mount Holly and Fairmount Park. They've seen flooding because of Gwin's Run. Has there been any talk about things, about evaluating how Gwin's Run and runoff in that area is happening? Luckily, we have Gwin Falls Parkway and the folies from there. That's helped with mitigating some of that runoff as well as flooding. But we've seen issues where Gwin's Run flooding other areas of that, of that community. Has there been any evaluation of Gwin's Run?
First, do you have specific areas? So we, Gwin's Run and the Gwin's Falls as an overall, so the Gwin's Run is mostly piped. And, and it then discharges out by the, by the park, right next to MDE headquarters. When I had mentioned before about IDDE, one of the first efforts we had in the early 2000s is we found a cross connection with the sanitary system, and we stopped that. And that really reduced the amount of base flow. But no, I can tell you right now, when you're talking about the flooding, are you talking about roadway flooding within the Gwin's Run watershed?
So my, my communities over there have indicated roadway flooding, especially in Fairmount Park, Mount Holly. This all abuts around the 8th District when you get closer towards Hilton Parkway. So we've seen flooding over there, but we've also seen some flooding in Gwin's Falls. Even on my, even with my Mindomin neighborhoods, which are farther away from Gwin's Run, we're seeing flooding along the storm drains on Liberty Heights Avenue down to Mindomin. So like, we've seen that flooding in those areas. So those are like my areas that have not, I've received most complaints from with neighbors, but that I wouldn't have known that had flooding issues. Like, I've had people say they lost their cars because of flooding in those areas from driving through.
Okay. One thing I can tell you is that, that H and H model that we're developing, and we've got a consultant coming on board for, the Gwin's Run watershed is one of the watersheds we've asked, that we've prioritized and tasked, not only model the system, but to also look at the inlets and, on the street flooding in there. So within the next year or so, we will be having some more information on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to move. I don't see any other committee members who have questions. If you do have any questions, please raise your hand, use the raise hand function, just so I know. I'm going to move to the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos for any questions, and then I'm going to follow Councilwoman Ramos with Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, everyone who presented today. Really great information and a really complicated issue. So I appreciated how you broke it down, and hopefully you can share the presentation with us so that we can also see the other slides that Ms. Grove wasn't able to get to. What, first question was just to clarify, Ms. McNeely, about the flood insurance. So those discounts that you talked about, given our participation in the National Flood Plan, Insurance Plan, that's only for areas in a designated flood plain. Is that correct? And then the map that we saw was kind of small. So those flood plain areas are really like near the watersheds and that kind of thing? Is that, is that correct?
So the, yes, the additional discounts that are received by our participation in the community rating system, yes, are just in the 1% and 0.2% flood areas, which are those fairly narrow areas around the riverine areas. But like I said, the federal government subsidizes flood insurance, and so anybody in the city should be able to access those federally subsidized insurance policies, as opposed to just having, to just being able to buy private flood insurance, which would be more expensive. Oh, sorry. And I, I, I think that because, because FEMA models the risk in those 1% and 0.2% flood areas as being higher than the rest of the city, the premiums then are also already lower because it, it reflects lower risk, even though we know that there are, can be
Councilwoman Ramos, did you have any additional questions?
I do have one more, if that's all right.
Okay.
I am wondering about, you'll hear one of the residents testify today about some worries that she's having about the foundation. And I don't know if, I didn't see in the slides, Ms. Grove, if that's going to be one of the things that you all are going to be looking at with this H and H, or whatever it is, as one of the pieces that comes up out of, you know, multiple years of, of damage, and whether or not there's anything to do to address that issue.
To address that issue, that would be something we would want to work with DHCD on, with it. Yeah. So I'm anxious to hear her testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and colleagues on the committee, and definitely thank you to all of the agency staff for the very informative presentation. I would like a second, having a coffee so I can do a deeper dive. The, and also thank you for all the amazing work that's been done on the Frederick Avenue corridor. I'd say that on behalf of the many residents that have been impacted and continue to be engaged in this, and many of, or few of which who I know are on the line and are likely to testify this year, their experience and support for this. The questions I had were around, specifically around the collaboration regionally. One of the things that we know is, is true, especially along the Frederick Avenue corridor, is the connection to the flood plain in Elickett City. Can you speak to the work being done, both in the planning of flood mitigation efforts with surrounding jurisdictions, regional jurisdictions, and as well as coordinated requests for funding potentially? Is there an opportunity to leverage the entire footprint to do flood mitigation work on infrastructure? I know one of the things needed on Frederick Avenue is the widening of the culvert, but that, my understanding is that similar culverts exist just over the county line? Is there a way to collaborate to see state or federal funding for the entire stretch? That would be my first question.
So the first step we're doing that is, is through that Urban Waters Federal Partnership, and then more, we have had Baltimore County in those discussions related to Frederick Avenue, but I think the, I like that you bring up that larger idea of more of a regional approach, and that's why we're taking that approach, because it's not only the counties that are part of the discussion, but also the state and federal agencies that may be able to help point us in the right direction of that assistance, be able to provide the technical assistance, so that we can make the most out of the resources that we have right now. I pointed out before that, you know, stormwater has been underfunded for so long, but we at least have a stormwater fee. Those surrounding counties don't all have a stormwater fee and are in the same place of not having enough resources to start having their hydraulic model, to do the large planning. So everything feels very reactive. But I am definitely supportive of trying to be much more proactive and do it on a regional level.
Thank you. Yeah, and the reason I, I raised that issue is, we know that if there isn't, you know, flood mitigation work being done or funded further upstream, then, you know, my constituents on the city side are going to be impacted by that time and time again. The, the second question I had was specifically to the, this is, I guess would be directed to planning around the Fred, Frederick Manor Apartments. It was mentioned in the presentation that the, that there was a $3 million price tag on acquisition and demo for that, for that property. I'm happy to follow up more on that price, that, that price point outside of this, but the question I had was, are there efforts to try and get the state to subsidize some of that cost, potential costs? And two, one of the questions I've gotten from, from constituents is, the lower basement units of that building are, have been repeatedly had flooding over the years, decades. Are the permits doing, still being withheld to prevent the apartment complex from renting out those lower basement units?
This is Chris Hiles with O E M, Planning Section Chief. I'll leave the, the question about whether or not the licenses are in, still in effect in terms of those basement apartments to somebody else, but as for purchasing that property and turning it into green space through the, the buyout program, the $3 million only covers the asking price for the property. We would have to then put in more money to cover the destruction and rehabilitation of the property. And that's about $5, $5 mil, I think, is the, the number that they were looking at. We have been talking to both regional and statewide agencies to try to see if we can get some of that money assisted through the, like, the Maryland Department of Environment, things of that nature. That's ongoing, and hopefully I'll have an answer sometime close to the end of the summer, which is when we'll have to make a decision as to exactly how we want to approach all of our grant funding requests for the 2022 cycle.
Yes, thanks, Chris. And if it's okay, I'm going to ask Bruna Atala to, just to give us a quick update on the permit, since she is our acting flood plain manager right now.
So as I understand it, and Housing would have additional information about the, the permit situation for the Frederick Avenue Manor Apartments, but the basement apartments don't have a flood plain permit for years now, and just recently, I believe three weeks ago, they, we received the permit application from them to exclude the use of three of the, of 10 of the basement apartments within the, within the structure. The permit hasn't been finalized yet. I believe Housing has requested additional information from, from the applicant, but they do not have a use permit for the use of those basement apartments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll follow outside of this to try and get more details on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. For the committee members, do we have any additional questions? If we do, please use the raise hand function. If not, we're going to be moving shortly to public testimony. And seeing no additional raised hands from our committee members, we're going to move to public testimony. The committee staff is now going to call on members of the public who wish to testify. Members of the public, you will have two minutes each to provide your testimony. For those who are signed in using a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify, and we will start with you. Next, we will go through all of the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the committee staff, one by one. You will hear two beeps when you're unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, testimony, you just simply need to say that you don't want to provide testimony after the two beeps. If any speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back. And at this time, Matt, you can start with the public testimony. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Camara Thomas.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Camara Thomas, and I am the Baltimore Program Manager at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. CDF is a regional nonprofit organization focused on reducing pollution entering the Chesapeake Bay. CBF is a regional nonprofit organization focused on reducing pollution entering the Chesapeake Bay and its waterways. CBF, for many years, has followed the work regarding stormwater and sanitary sewer overflows in Baltimore City with a goal of working to develop solutions, mitigate harmful impacts, and engage with communities dealing with the implications of these events. We engage with many of the represented agencies here today. This is a complex issue, but we're thankful for this investigative hearing to learn more about the data and potential, for short and long-term, multi-layer solutions. Through community outreach and advocacy, CBF was introduced to residents dealing with extreme flooding impacts. Through these conversations, the residents of 35th Street and Edna Gardens Lakeside revealed, in addition to sanitary sewer overflows, they were suffering and are suffering from unprecedented and unpredictable flooding events outside of the regulated floodplain. These residents have lost vehicles, pets, and have almost lost their lives in the rising waters. Another resident in the Seabock community has also been dealing with water in his backyard that floods his basement, has been flooding his basement for decades. This is truly a burden and impacts communities that have been overlooked and dismissed, who have lived in their home for decades, and their homes have been passed down through generations. Warmer air and water temperatures will increase storm events, combined with higher sea levels, that will affect these residents and others. Climate change and rising water has no boundaries, no borders. These events affect more than buildings and businesses, they affect people's lives. We cannot address this problem without talking about public health and equity. They're inseparable from climate and our top concerns. CBF will continue to partner in the effort to address inland flooding issues, analyzing the science and the data, validating these experiences, and advocating for solutions to increase community resilience. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and we really look forward to having conversations about this with the agencies and council members and residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. We now have Alice Valpeta.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Alice Valpeta, and I'm the Baltimore Harbor Waterkeeper at Blue Water Baltimore. My role as your local waterkeeper is to speak on behalf of our waterways and to amplify the voice of more than a million people in this region who live within the Patapsco and Back River watersheds. These people are taxpayers, they're voters, and these are people who are experiencing catastrophic flooding and sewage backups into their homes when it rains. These are people who need help. When residents in Baltimore experience inland flooding, it's not just rainwater that flows into their homes, it's toxic floodwaters. We have old, leaky, broken underground pipe systems which let sewage and stormwater mix, even when they're supposed to be completely separate pipes. That means our sanitary sewer system is routinely flooded beyond its capacity when it rains, which results in costly, traumatic, and dangerous sewage backups into people's homes. People are incurring property damage due to these sewage backups, and they're getting sick. The problem of inland flooding in Baltimore really boils down to inadequate stormwater management. Like I said, our underground infrastructure is old and leaky. But in theory, our stormwater pipes are supposed to take rainfall from our streets directly into our streams with no treatment system in between. Street sweeping is an important part of stormwater management because it helps prevent blockages in the pipes that cause stormwater to back up in the system and result in flooded streets. But the key word there is "part." It can't be the bulk of our stormwater management strategy because it does absolutely nothing to address the root cause of the problem, the sheer volume of stormwater entering the pipes in the first place. But that's exactly where we spend a huge amount of the funds generated from the stormwater utility fee. It's become the brittle backbone of our MS4 permits. Our city needs to be investing in sustainable, nature-based, green solutions to stormwater management that actually reduce the amount of stormwater coursing through our streets and underground pipes and treat that water. We need code changes to make it easier for businesses and institutions to voluntarily implement those projects. Practices like curb bumpouts, pervious pavement, increased street trees, green roofs, and bio-retention projects can reduce the strain on our pipes and treat that water and remove pollutants that would otherwise end up directly in our local waterways. Green stormwater solutions work 24/7, not just when an employee is driving a truck. And as projections of climate change indicate that the Baltimore region will only get more frequent, more intense rainstorms in the future, we know the problem is going to get worse before it gets better. It's time to develop a comprehensive plan that works for Baltimore residents now and into the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alice. Just want to, just a gentle reminder, we're trying to, we're trying to do this within two minutes. Thank you, everyone.
It looks like we do not have any additional hands raised, and so I will move on to callers. First caller, I'm going to unmute you now, and you'll hear two beeps. Caller, do you have any testimony? Right, no response. Moving on to the next caller.
John Vorders.
Go ahead.
Yes, good morning, everyone. This is John Vorders at 3800 the Alameda. When it rains, and rains sufficiently, the water runs down Chestnut Hill, flooding the corners of Lock Raven and the Alameda. The north side, I'm sorry, the west side of the Alameda, over on the side where the, the hospital is, that whole curb lane, all the way to the middle, is flooded, it's underwater, it's impassable. Sewer hole covers raise up. I'm calling constantly to get someone out here for the safety of the community. A lot of times in July, when we had that bad rain, you could not see the Alameda at all. The median strip was underwater, all the way across the Alameda, from the hospital all the way back to my property. I just want to make it noted and see if there's anything that can be done with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vorders, thanks for your testimony.
Next caller, just unmuted you. No response. Next caller, you should have just heard two beeps.
Hi, my name is Mary Jackson. And I live in Edna Gardens, near 35th and Hillen Road. I bought my house in 1999, and I didn't know anything about flooding in this area. And the first time I experienced a flooding was in 2003, where my house, my basement full with raw sewage, and I had two feet of sewage and water on my first floor. I'm sorry, just getting emotional. When I put in full claim with the city, they told, they denied it because they said they knew nothing about flooding in the area. My insurance company would not cover me because they said it was a flood. So I, in turn, went through the city, offered me a $5,000 loan to use my house as collateral that I had to pay back to get things done in my house. Besides that, I made a loan at the credit union to get money to repair the damage in my house and buy items that I lost, even though I couldn't replace everything. After that, it flooded again. The PPW sent out a person, they said the drain was blocked. The main drain was blocked, and that's why the street flooded. I filed a claim with the city, and the city denied it again, saying that they didn't, we didn't give them enough chance to fix the problem. My house has flooded so many times that my insurance company wanted to drop me. So I had to go to the insurance commission and ask them to stop them from dropping me because it's not my fault. My insurance company, I asked them to go after the city, and the city actually told them they're not paying the claim and that they didn't think that they, that the insurance company went against them. This just happened, my car floated down 35th Street and ended on the other side. My grandbaby, who was three months old, lost all her stuff, her crib, her mattress, her clothing, everything. My son lost valuable records he had actually gotten from Europe because of sewage all over everything. It has got, somebody's got to do something. When it rained, everybody parked off the street because once you see the manhole cover pop off, you know the street's going to flood, and the water comes from the top all the way down the river. I was never told that this area floods. If I had been told, I would not have bought the house here. It is a nightmare. It's frustrating, it's devastating, and something needs to be done. And to find out that it's been going on for years and nobody acknowledged it, it's just wrong, it's just wrong. It's just totally wrong. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, thank you for sharing your experience, we appreciate it.
We have one more caller. Caller, you should have just heard two beeps, if you'd like to testify.
Hello, good morning. My name is Pamela Luellen, and I live on East 35th Street at the intersection of Hillen Road. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my story with you today. Respectfully, it is about time. To this day, to this day, not one person from the city has attempted to come and talk to residents of 35th Street about the issues we are facing. So I am here today to tell you all, since 1957, my neighborhood has experienced extreme flooding. It floods, and the water comes down the street like a dam has busted. We've gotten, we've lost cars, we've lost trucks. I have gotten so much water in my basement that it comes up to, it came up to my first floor. It destroyed my furniture, I had carpet, I had to put in new floors. Also, the city has known about this problem, but there has not been one effort from the city to come to the people that, the residents here, to talk with us, try to figure out what we can do. I've had this home, this home was purchased by my grandfather in 1970. I've lost two cars, two trucks, I've had so much damage in my house, I've had to take care of it. When the insurance company did not pay for it, I had to take money out of retirement in order to do some of the work. Then the insurance, when they finally said, well, we'll do something, they made my deductible $2,000. I've had to pay for cleanup. I have done all of this. Now, my thing is this, we are citizens, we pay taxes. We expect for you all to do what you have to do. We expect for you to come to us and say to us, we know you have a problem, let's see if we can help you. None of this has been done, and I don't understand it. I really don't. It's hard, and a lot of the people around here are retired people. They, they either own their homes or they had made loans in order to repair their homes because they've had floods. Now, I know you say that you don't clean the drain, you don't, no. The city tried that. We clean our drains. Ms. Murray, next door to me, myself and Ms. Johnson, she's passed away. We clean our drains. When we see garbage in the street, we get it up. So you cannot put that on us, because we do what we're supposed to do. We're trying to protect our homes. Now, I feel like this, if you've known about this, we don't live in a flood zone. So flood insurance, are we eligible for it? And then if you take it out, are they going to pay for certain damages? I don't know, I have no idea. But we don't live in a flood zone, we're not on the map as a flood zone. So the only choice we have is to do what we have to do as citizens. But I think, and I feel, it is the responsibility of the city to try and reach out to their citizens, talk to us. Let us know what you're going to do. Knock on our door, get to know who we are, so that when we do call 311, oh, this is Ms. Luellen from such and such, you're not doing it. So yes, I'm upset, and I'm going to cut off them, but we need for you all to do what you have to do and help us out, because we do need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luellen. I just want to, I want to stop just for a brief moment here. We hear our residents gasping for help. They need help with this situation. I want to make sure that all our agency heads, everyone that's on this line is listening to what they're saying at this time. Matt, if you can continue with the next caller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looks like we do not have any additional public testimony.
I'm going to say this, Councilwoman Ramos, I truly appreciate you. I know the other committee members appreciate you for bringing this resolution in front of us. Just as I stated, we have residents where we know there are issues with inland flooding, with infrastructure issues. We've heard from Ms. Luellen, who, who has touched me. We've heard from Ms. Jackson, who has touched me. Ms. Luellen said, we are cleaning the drains. We are doing our part as taxpaying residents, and we need to make sure that our agencies are helping our folks out with this flooding that's happening on the streets. So I'm going to close there. Public testimony, it has been concluded. Right now, we are going to move into the voting portion, understanding Councilwoman Ramos does want to vote this out. Is there a motion to move the resolution favorable?
Madam Chair.
And I apologize, guys, who, who made the motion?
Madam Chair, this was Councilwoman Felicia Porter.
Is there a? Motion made by Councilwoman Felicia Porter, second by Councilman Rhonda Orsi, is that correct on the second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So McCray is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilmember Conway is absent, Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter?
Yes.
Councilman Torrance?
Yes.
And Councilman Schleifer, he is absent at this time. So the motion is, the motion has passed with a vote of five to zero. The committee will report the resolution at the next city council meeting. I want to thank everybody for joining us this morning. I want to thank all of our agencies who, who have provided a lot of valuable information. At this time, this hearing is now adjourned.